Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to Scottsburg's Common Council. Today is August the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. Dear my Lord, we will call our feeding to get that to orders. And we begin by prayer and pledge of allegiance. So if you all don't mind, let us stand. I was afraid. And we will say the pledge of allegiance. Father, we come before you this day thanking you for the births that you have brought about in this world. And Father, we pray for those who have mourned over the deaths. Father, each day is in your hands. And we thank you for the days. We thank you for our pilgrimage of life. I think for your provision you've given to us, Father. Of just you and the beauty of you. We come before you for the city of Scottsburg, the state of Indiana, and our country, Father. Let the light of Messiah shine into this world. And let it shine here in Scottsburg. We pray for wisdom and understanding and discernment, Father, for those who have been elected to these officials to serve them, Father. And let us have that attitude, a servitude, servitude attitude, Father, for this city. And we pray for your ideas and your presence and the right people there, Father. We love you and we pray that you keep it to yourself. We ask you in Jesus's name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. Our first thing on the agenda this evening is a public hearing. You have the agenda over here on the TV as well, if you want to see what your council is seeing. It's a public hearing on the proposed amendment of sewage work rates and charges of the city of Scottsburg, Indiana. So there is a slight increase on that. So we'll open the floor today for those of you who would like to ask questions regarding this public hearing. We have our wastewater treatment manager superintendent Chase Harden here with us this evening and a class four operator. So what's any questions? Or comments? Also, we did a little show.
Open the public hearing.
That's what I just did, is open the public hearing. Just opened it. Yeah, we just opened it. We built a brand new sewer plant. Probably doubles, a lot of capacity here, so. Any questions about this? Any comments going once?
Is that just for public or is that, is that the council?
This is for public. This is for public. Okay, so you're very top on item four, your public hearing on proposed amendment of sewage work rates and charges of the city of Scottsburg, Indiana. Somebody? We're closing. Twice, we're closed. Let's go down next to our rule call brought to you by Jan Hart.
Your area?
Here.
Tim Hall.
Here.
Rick Coatsart.
Here.
Kevin Smallwood.
Here.
Richie Barton.
Here.
Mark Nicholson.
Here.
All are here, thank you very much. The next thing is the approval of the amendments of our last meeting, which was on October the twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. If councils had a chance to read through those and you see no titles or amendments, we will entertain a motion to accept the amendments as presented.
I'll make a motion. Two seconds.
Because our next motion is our second.
I'll second. I'll second.
Ten seconds. Any questions, comments? Regent Donald, here for the I.
Aye.
Opposed? Manus, thank you very much. We now go to another public comment. The city of Scotts, Scottsburg City Council will accept public comments. Individuals wishing to address the council be asked to come forward and state their name for the record. Each person will have five minutes to voice their opinion or to focus on issues and not be used to target city employees or other individuals. Would anybody like to come forward this evening? Any dog parking ideas or something like that? Public open. Not run close. Run once. And twice. Or close. Public theory. Now we're going down to our item eight. This will be Dr. Frye from Indiana University Southeast with Jamie Tobe.
How does this work? Is this the hot seat? Do we go up here? What do we do?
What is, what is your, if you want to sit there, you can, but if you want to stand up so everybody can see, Dr. Frye. You're the. For sure.
Like right here?
Yeah. Yeah.
They show on TV here.
Thank you for having us here today. I'm the director for the Scott County Community Foundation, for those of you who I don't know. And as you know, as a community foundation, we are involved in a lot of different areas in the community. So everything from the arts to beautification, youth development, social services, everything in between, we help with that in the community. So a big part of that is education. And about maybe thirteen years ago, my board asked me to meet with the school superintendents and find out from them where they felt we could make the biggest impact in the community with education. And both superintendents had said early childhood education. So that's what we did. We partnered with United Way Scott County. We started the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, which I think everybody knows a lot about. We created an early childhood committee, which has been very active over the years. They do child resource bears. We connect families with resources. We do a lot of networking, a lot of education, a lot of different initiatives. Last year, we started the story walk. So we have three story walks in Scott County, including one of the workhouse square. And then last fall, we received news from Lilly Endowment that we were going to get a planning grant. So we decided with that, with those funds, to do an early childhood strategic plan to kind of be more intentional about those efforts. So we contracted with Dr. Melissa Frye with IU Southeast. And we had listening sessions this spring where we, I think a lot of people in this room probably came as well. So we listened to employers, we listened to parents of young children, people that worked with kids, schools, just kind of everybody in the community in general to, you kind of care about what the problems are in early care and education. And as city council members, you're probably wondering, how does education affect what we are doing in the city? And I think you'll hear from Dr. Frye that this is the single most, biggest impact you can make on economic development. And I think a lot of times we think jobs and manufacturing, which obviously that's a big component, but you will hear from Dr. Frye why this is such important work and why you all should be invested in early care and education in Scott County. So without further ado.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm going to use the acronym ECE to refer to early care and education from birth to age five. So that's childcare and preschool both from birth to age five. I'm the director of the Applied Research and Education Center, and I have done community and economic development research and facilitation for about seventeen years. The very first research report I wrote as research associate for a nonprofit community economic development firm that provided small business loans, including many to childcare providers in eastern Kentucky, was on this childcare issue and the challenges of building sustainable businesses in childcare in a low-income market. I had been exposed to research on early brain development as the mother of young children participating in a cooperative play school preschool program. But my work in Kentucky led me to the literature on the economic benefits of high-quality early care and education. In my economic development work, I work, I examine community systems and I help local organizations identify leverage points for community transformation and thriving. Education and healthcare are foundational for all communities, and ECE may be the point of greatest leverage for both. This evening, I will share with you just a very small slice of the extensive research on the economics of ECE and what the economic picture looks like for Scott County families. And I will hit a few highlights on early brain development and what access to high-quality ECE looks like in Scott County. So Jamie provided a couple of fact sheets to all of you to drive home the value and importance and to give all of you some talking points and things to consider as you make decisions for your community. I will note, some of these figures will be updated and enhanced within weeks as there is a report coming out soon, not by us, but by somebody else that looks more closely at costs and updates our economic impact models for the state of Indiana. So that will be useful to everyone as well. The more researchers study the topic and refine our models and surveys, the more we understand the vital importance of the decisions we make as communities about how we choose to care for and support infants and young children. Across the literature and examinations of various impacts of high-quality ECE, estimates on the return on each dollar invested in high-quality ECE range from four dollars to sixteen dollars. Estimates of just the public return on public investment are about four dollars per, per dollar invested. And those estimates do not include impacts on future healthcare costs and public assistance savings or the potential for higher incomes and steady employment of childcare workers. So that's another benefit of investing in high-quality early care and education. A two thousand and eighteen study of the impact of inadequate childcare in Indiana estimated that the shortfall in childcare cost our state one point eight billion dollars in direct costs to employers, including one point two billion dollars due to employee absence and turnover. That report estimated costs for rural Park and Montgomery counties that ranged from three point three million in one of those counties to seven point nine million annually in the other. Scott County's population size lies right between these two in terms of just the population size. So we might pencil in like a rough estimate of around five million dollars to local employers here in Scott County due to absence and turnover resulting from childcare issues. Quality childcare is essential to increasing labor force participation and lowering child poverty rates. Among Scott County, women with children under the age of six, labor force participation is about sixty-eight point five percent compared to seventy-three point one percent for Indiana and seventy-two point eight percent nationally. Thirty-one point eight percent of Scott County children under five years of age live in poverty compared to just over eighteen percent in the state of Indiana and nationally. That number drops to sixteen point six percent for children five to seventeen and is more in line with state and national figures for children five to seventeen years old. And that's when our existing public childcare and education kicks in, our public K through twelve system. This shows that local parents work when they have somewhere safe and healthy to send their kids. A new study out of Ball State estimates that adding one hundred childcare workers to the typical Indiana economic growth region would lead to an additional eight hundred and sixty women ages twenty-five to thirty-four or twenty-three hundred women ages thirty-five to forty-four in the labor force. The difference in the age groups is attributable to the fact that infants have a far lower required child to caregiver ratio and younger women more often have the younger children. So investments in ECE are economic development. Years ago, some work by Mildred Warner and colleagues at Cornell University found that the economic development multiplier for high-quality ECE is around three to four times that of traditional, of most traditional economic development strategies. Part of the reason for the high returns lies in the lifetime impact on children who receive high-quality care. Ninety percent of the brain structure is built by age five and much of that scaffolding forms by age two. My old fact sheets and reports included a data point that seven hundred to one thousand neural connections were made each second during the first few years of life. The Harvard Center on the Developing Child conducted a systematic review of current research that uses more advanced brain scanning technology. And they have updated that figure to more than one million new neural connections forming each second in those early years. Those don't form if children are not in language-rich, developmentally appropriate environments. The foundational scaffolding on which all future learning builds is established before our traditional K through twelve public school system even meets a child. This means taking collective responsibility for supporting strong starts for children birth to age five is in all our best interest. In Scott County, roughly seventy percent of children under age six with all parents in their household working do not have access to care that is rated high quality. It does not mean they don't have access to quality care, but it does mean seventy percent are not in places or centers that are on the state's quality rating system and rated as quality. The Department of Health and Human Services says that affordable childcare is care that costs no more than seven percent of a household's income. The average cost of registered care in Scott County, regardless of quality, is well above seven percent of median household income, making it unaffordable for the majority of households with children. While many families qualify for vouchers, voucher and provider waitlists limit the impact of such assistance. The state has recently changed some requirements for vouchers to make them more accessible, particularly for those who work in early care and education, but also for all those burning up to one hundred eighty-five percent poverty level. Still, the supply of quality care and the costs of care keep it out of reach for the majority of Scott County families. So they make do. Choose not to work. Parents work opposite shifts, leaving no time for the family to all be together. And many children are left with whatever adult is available to keep them safe. We had one person share in a listening session the story of someone leaving the child at home with the old, with a family member with active substance use disorder because that was the only adult available. As community leaders, you are vitally important stakeholders with an interest in seeing Scott County seize the opportunity that early childhood provides, presents. Over the last seven years, Scott County increased the number of quality early care and education slots fourfold by putting pre-K in the elementaries and the early learning academy. Recent shifts have eliminated roughly twenty percent of those quality ECE slots. A committee representing diverse stakeholders and incorporating input from several listening sessions has developed a strategic action plan for Scott County. The plan includes the following three components. One, community education and advocacy, to shift the conversation around ECE away from a babysitter model that assumes that a child that can't talk only needs a clean diaper and regular feedings to one rooted in a clear understanding of the importance of birth to five and the potential returns on investment for increasing supply and access to affordable, high-quality care marked by developmentally appropriate activities and interactions. Two, a Scott County ECE director is positioned to provide back home support to align community assets and coordinate access to care to move toward the goal of every Scott County child having access to high-quality, affordable care. Three, build a high-quality early care and education workforce pipeline. Scott County has ready assets for building a pipeline of trained and educated early care and education workers who can create developmentally appropriate, language-rich environments for infants, toddlers, and preschool-aged children. These include Schneck Medical Center's babysitting certification and training, the high school career and technical education programs, the Prosser Early Childhood Program, IU Tech's Child Development Associate's Degree, and IU Southeast Elementary and Early Education Programs. Local government has a role to play, along with area employers, school districts, and the state. Your community has energy and many assets ready to align in pursuit of leveraging early childhood to build quality of life and a high-quality labor force for a strong future. I encourage you to engage this opportunity. And I want to note that local government controls a lot of things like sometimes property and zoning and things that may be, resources that might not be direct financing, but might be really important resources to pair with other resources to create a larger number of high-quality slots available throughout the county. So those, those are things to think about in addition to obviously, you know, everybody needs funding. But there are other resources that aren't funding that are very important to succeeding in these efforts. Do you have any questions?
What questions the council have? I want you to know that we are, Dr. Frye, we are in a growth mode in Scottsburg, wanting to be one of the best communities in the world, kind of what you can be. We have a lot of housing going up and we have identified early running children. We've applauded the Scottsville District students advance on that. We are also coupled with Prosser, with IU Tech as well, as you mentioned. And we're looking for that. We want, we want to stop the brain grooming. We want to see these kids come back and utilize the biggest asset that they have in Scottsburg, which is their parents. And as much as we can get in. We do have, we are, we are looking at two different areas as well to try to have at least another two hundred children that can come into. So this has been, this has been a priority for this administration as well. I don't think enough coming. But I think, I know Jamie's going to have your number so we can reach out to you. And we got, so we're ready to block or question or something. What do you do in this, in this case? So. Mark, if you guys got anything?
No.
Well, thank you so much. I would like to add something. I think it's opportunity to set in on the, the listing sessions and talking sessions that these ladies held. And I know I was there, one of the ones that I was at. And I would encourage all of my fellow councilmen to really dig into this information. This is, there was a lot of good information that was brought up and a lot of things was cultivated to put this into this format that we're looking at. And myself, having been a grandparent, having young grandkids in that age, it was very touching for me to be able to hear that information and how important it is. But yes, we have a responsibility as leaders in the community to embrace this and keep that in mind as we make our decisions for, you know, for the better of the community. So I would just encourage you all to, you know, not just stick that away in your folders. I encourage you to read over it, ask questions. I know I've had several conversations with Jamie, just as I went back through my notes from the, the other sessions that I sat in. So, you know, we got, we're early in our terms on this, so we're going to be faced with this going forward. So I just want to thank you ladies all and thank you for bringing that information to us tonight and putting that together.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. Ladies and gentlemen. Next on our agenda this evening is the Potted Downtown beat announced on October thirty-one from six to eight. And I'm assuming Chief, that's going, you're going to have your normal street shutdown by assuming. And Jill, this is the time from six to eight. So and we're just giving you a little bit of heads up, that's a good two months of labor that we have in on these schedules this evening. Next is the Code Board Department for Code Enforcement. And as you know, we have a three panel. So it will be Troy Law, Bob Babs, and Daryl Seifert. We're heading up that four, four second. So just for everybody to know that. We're going to go now down into D, the second reading ordinance, twenty twenty-four dash eleven. An ordinance amending the schedule of rates and charges linked by the city of Scottsburg, Indiana, for the owners of property served by the sewer and sewage works of Scottsburg and for users of the sewer system and other matters connected therewith. So we would, we've had a time to look forward. We would accept the motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eleven on second reading. We have a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty-four eleven on second reading.
I just have a couple of questions real quick. Code, Mr. Mayor, on, on the rate for the regional sewer district? We've got two different figures. Well, six sixty-eight, starting in eight, nine, one, twenty-four. What, what's it cost to, to do this about? Asking, asking you what?
So there's a couple.
Process that.
Yeah, sure. So as those of you who know, I'm Brandon with, um, the subset that's on work with the city on putting together the sewer rate study that is supporting the rates and charges that are being, you know, ordered through tonight. I think the best indication of that would be to take a look at what you treat. You know, the sewer billings are based on water usage. So, you know, either way, you look at it, how much is it cost for the water usage? Or how much is it cost for what you actually treat? And then you get two different figures. But based on the, I would say, if you, it sounds to me, Tim, what your question is kind of related to how can we justify what is getting charged to South, I'm sorry, Scott County. Their rate is at six dollars per thousand. And that's based on the water usage. Is that correct? So they're made, that's based on the water usage, so.
Current rate is going to be six.
It's a, it was six dollars and then we're recommending six dollars and sixty-eight cents. So they're at six sixty-eight.
Six sixty-eight is a.
Yep. I'm just wondering, carefully, is this based on your, based on what we're calculating as your revenue requirements? So that would be your expenses about three point three million. So we are depending on the, the, depending on the, kind of what cost you put in there. It could be anywhere from, you know, I think anywhere from twelve to fifteen dollars is what it would cost for, for water. You have to consider though that the lower, lower usage customers, they're going to be paying a bit more because as, as that usage goes up, there's a bit of economies of scale. So I think for, for a wholesale customer, it's not quite a good argument, I guess, for them to pay exactly what that charge would be from a, from a bill of flow standpoint. And that's because, you know, as they use more, they don't have to pay as much fixed cost. It kind of gets down to the, the conversation of fixed cost versus variable cost. But as for, you know, what your actually, your charge is for, for what you bill, it's probably close to about thirteen dollars a thousand.
No, I don't think, I don't know if we understand.
Okay.
Each other.
Okay.
Well, what does it cost the sewer plant per thousand gallons to process that? That material, that sewage? In other words, we get a thousand gallons, take a thousand gallons of, well, y'all know it's going through the meter. That's what's figuring on the meter work.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Brandon, let me, let me say this. When I was in court, in trouble of court with the regional sewer district, I had, I had a copy from, from your company. And, and they said that our cost was right around five dollars and twenty-two cents. I gave them a wholesale rate, basically, at cost simply because they are charging our city customers as well as many of their other rural customers, but folks that are outside of our area. All the Spaulding Square folks, all of the, the Willow Shore folks, all of those, some of our highest taxing areas, they're paying seventy percent more to regional sewer than what our regular city people are. So they, they agreed that they would lower their revenue. So that's, that's why we're going to be talking about this. So anyway, it was, it was reduced something because they would, they told us they would reduce their rate to their customers.
Gotcha. Okay.
So I, I just wanted to know what our rate is to, to service that thousand gallons of water. What, what's it would take chemical-wise, hour-wise? How much does it cost to take care of that thousand gallons? Is it up above that six sixty-eight or is it less than that or?
So for, and, and I'm sorry, we were a bit, we weren't on the same page. I was talking from build water. So it, because it was a line loss, or I'm sorry, not a line loss, an INI factor, which is close to about fifty-five percent. So I would say half. So you would want to take that amount I gave you and divide it by two would be a good estimate. So above six dollars would be what it, what it costs. But, but probably close to about seven or eight dollars for the, for the F one flows. And that's taking in all of the costs. And you could go, you could really get into weeds and go to each line, chemicals, labor things of that nature. And I haven't done that analysis, but just from a kind of an overall cost perspective, that's, that would be my answer.
The common resident, what does it, you know, what does it cost to treat that thousand gallons of water?
The most of that's going to be your own end, but then, you know, you've also got the debt service and the bonds and some of the other repairs and maintenance and capital outlays and such. So I would say that's all included in the rate that you have to charge your customers.
Okay. That's my major concern. That's my major concern, is that we're not, you know, we're breaking even, we're not losing a lot of money on doing something that costs a lot more to treat.
Right now, our costs have gone up, and so this is about eleven percent. So we're going from about ten ninety, if you look on your, on your rate, it goes, it's going to look like it's going to go to twelve dollars and nineteen cents. So it's about a dollar twenty cents per thousand.
For a thousand, for the city resident, on the city sewer.
That's correct.
Right.
So do we have motion to pass on second reading?
Chase, is this enough to make the sewer plant run?
Yes.
And be functioning in what I did once before?
We need this increase to make our payments.
Okay, I make a, I would make a motion to pass it on second reading.
Thank you, Richard. The motion is passed on second reading, is there, is there a motion that are?
Second.
Rick, second.
Second reading.
Rick, second.
So Rick, second. So any questions, comments, concerns? Are you done, or do you want to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Was that five dollars? Was that?
Five dollars, we passed it. You want us to spin the rules, pass the second third reading? I don't think so.
No, I want to just let it go.
We're going down to first reading of Orders Twenty Twenty Four dash thirteen, orders admitting the zoning maps of United, unified development orders now in effect for the city of Scottsburg, Indiana. And this is Ken Temple.
Let me introduce your open at all.
Thank you. From right here.
Okay, hey, guys, so this just went to the Plan Commission last week, and I emailed you all the materials for this last week as well. Like you said, Ken Temple is requesting to rezone about forty acres of land at the end of Mansfield Drive, so just south of John Jones Goodwill, and apartments back there. The land is currently zoned B1 for neighborhood business and then agriculture, and they would like to rezone it to R1 and R3, which is low density and high density residential. The high density residential would not be for apartments, it would be for something similar to a Spaulding Square. And I'll let them touch on that a little more, but just so you guys know, our technical advisory committee, which is made up of your utility department head, city engineering, those kind of people who work with us every day, did not have any concerns for this project. Eighteen public notices were sent out, two people did not object, and one did not, wasn't delivered. So we have no complaints on this, no one came to the Plan Commission meeting in support of or against it. But the Plan Commission is sending this to you with favorable recommendation unanimously. So if you guys have any questions, let me know, I'll let them take it away. But you guys do have a packet showing where high density versus low density zones would be. But Julie and Ken are here, if you have any questions.
I will add to it just a little, but you did actually a better job than me.
Thank you.
But just to tell you, inside that packet is some pictures of homes that we intend to have built or built. There is, I'm going to say, a three hundred twenty-five thousand dollar range. We're actually trying to make these houses, you might say, a little step higher than what would be the normal bulk builder people, okay? So hopefully, these are going to be a step up. The high density, really what we're trying to do there is basically mimic Spaulding Square that has been so popular. And we feel like over on the side there, where we're putting away about six acres for the high density, where you would have the option for either as a buyer, whether you wanted the privacy of the Spaulding Square type houses or the single-family houses that you see in the picture. Any questions?
What price range would the high density ones be in?
Actually, they're going to be about the same money. It's just a different concept, and I've been amazed how many people actually want that. Of course, you know, there is a real privacy, and there's also a little extra safety. People like have an idea that there's somebody there that could help them in a need, but they're really going to be about the same cost.
Would the sewer be, is the sewer dented or will it be hooked up to the city of Scottsburg?
It'll be city sewer.
Yeah, city sewer.
The city sewer, city water, and then Jackson County RMC electric.
What would the square put in there, his house? About fourteen to sixteen hundred, fourteen being usually the smallest, and up to about sixteen fifty, they're three-bedroom, open floor plan, two baths with a two-car garage. But they'll be more of, more of a, if you spend away type area, or? Yeah, or not. Like I said, I'm really looking for the next eleven there, so to speak.
Right.
We use, not a lot of vinyl, we've got stone, it's trimmed, and we go over better countertops, better cabinets, and we think there's a need for that house.
Curbside field wise, it'll, it'll slap in any of the areas.
Be more of an investment home rather than a first buyer home, which I think really works out in the community better for the long run.
Agreed.
Yeah, we are going to have the lake there, and then we'll have kind of a walking trail, so there will be a little amenity to the development there.
So you'll have retention pond, that's a retention pond type deal on the west side?
Yeah, it's actually a little lake right now, so we'll probably go in there and dredge that out, clean it out because it's too shallow water. And we'll probably do a walking trail around it. That will be not only the lake that's there, but it will be the retention, detention pond also.
And once this is rezoned, you guys, if it is rezoned, whenever they apply to the Plan Commission next, it will be for subdivision approval and plat approval, and that's when they'll do all of the engineering to know drainage, detention, retention ponds, sidewalks, all of that to make sure they may meet the city standards.
Egress, Ugress, what about that, is that?
Well, Mansfield, yeah, Mansfield Drive is, of course, built more for commercial, so you've got an extremely wide street there. As we do in any subdivision, when we get all done, there will be a road that will be stubbed to the next property. So that allows for future development. So in the design, there'll be a road that later on can be connected so that you can have an entrance and an exit, which would be more of a phase two. Phase one, it'll be cul-de-sacs, and then, of course, you'll come back out Mansfield.
And you're in Egress, it would be Mansfield Road, we're going to get a state of the lake road or take a right over.
But we will leave the road for further expansion. So we always do a stubbed road into the next property, that way if anybody decides to carry it on.
So none of this is going to be a rental type property, so about?
No, 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 not rentals.
Mansfield Drive, as Council knows, is where John Jones is at, it goes all the way down and stops there. So this property here is talking about, it's going to be on both the east and the west side of that road.
Correct.
And so it's going to be easy in and out for any type of emergency services as well that might come about, so. Other questions?
I was American, east and west, you know, what's that, when he's talking, the east, is that after you pass the apartments, that property in behind, those apartments to the east there?
Yes, excellent road.
Right behind Goodwill.
Well, yeah, you go past Goodwill, pass John Jones, pass the apartments, and then the road's already been built down there.
Right.
I think it's going to be developed once before maybe. So the road dead ends right there where that field starts.
Correct. Yeah, no matter where it is, when he said the east, it kind of, it's telling me, because I knew there was property right behind Goodwill, that between it and apartments on the east side of that road, but you don't know that, you've got some property to the east of that though.
Yeah, I actually do on the two point two acres that is right behind the Goodwill.
Kind of an L shape, comes back out to fifty-six?
No, it's just, it's just a rectangle between Goodwill and the apartments.
Okay.
And we was kind of saving that in case apartments was needed, it's not part of this one. So that two point two was set aside for forty-eight units at some time.
And the property to the east of Goodwill, then, is that where you get big time, the L's coming soon, is that somebody totally different now?
Yeah, somebody else owns that.
Somebody else owns that, yes.
It's right on fifty-six, right square, yeah, I do not.
Other questions, Mr. Temple? I think you're done, we'll accept the motion to pass Orders Twenty Twenty Four dash thirteen, admitting the zoning orders. Do I have a motion?
I'm making a motion, it looks like a pretty nice project for to be out there, and I really think it can really help the city. And I liked the pictures of the houses, I think it'll be a good investment, and it'll pay itself. So I make a motion, you go ahead and change it, John.
Absolutely, thank you, Rick.
I'll second that.
Okay, Kevin, thank you so much for that, any questions, comments? Are you done, or do you want to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any others, thank you very much.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, announcements, we're off on Labor Day. I'll sit at City Hall, they closed down a little bit. Saturday drop-off, if you haven't seen it, in September, from eight o'clock till noon on Saturday, September seventh, fourteenth, twenty-one, and twenty-eight, we will have, we will have drop-off at the, at our city transfer station. So, so there. Also, there is Hooked on Fishing, Jill, you know that thing?
I don't know.
Oh, here it is, I'm sorry, I got it right here. Hooked on Fishing is going to be at, from eight forty-five till noon on September the twenty-eighth. So we'll bring these back out again for you in September. So end of September here for Hooked on Fishing, fall drop-off. So that's every Saturday from September seventh, fourteenth, twenty-one, and twenty-eight. You're welcome to come to the transfer station, drop things off. So what other announcements, your questions?
Yeah, I talked to Jerry about that fishing thing, and it started when I was on Parkport, and this will be out the fifth year, it's getting bigger every year. I've been in contact with Jerry, he says he's got a really lot of projects and stuff, and I'll probably come down, I usually cook hot dogs, I'll probably go down and help him a little bit. But I encourage everybody that has kids, growing kids, or anybody that has kids at school, you don't have to even catch a fish. Just go down there and eat some hot dogs, have some fun, win some prizes, and come on out. It's a good, it's only for a few hours. And if you see them catch a smile, they come up, these little bitty fish, you thought they caught a marlin or something. But it's a really nice time, and I bet we started that years ago, and I hope it gets getting bigger and bigger every year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Mark, do you have anything? We have a motion to adjourn?
I'm making a motion.
We're adjourned, thank you very much.